All right, sorry folks, thank you. I think we will now open our meeting. And just to recap, who's here as we don't have our name tags? Do you want to start down there?
Uh, Leo Brown.
Megan Glenn.
Jessica Riley, hello out there in TV land.
Anna May O'Shea Brook.
And Jeff Morrison.
Super. And so, welcome to the new year. But we're gonna, before we start, we're gonna have a moment of silence for a teacher who passed, John Pansiacco. Thank you. He will be missed. At this moment, we'll open it up to public input.
Chris McQ Potts, Seven Curved Street. I just, I have one just clarifying question for the school committee, just so I understand how this works, which I think I do, but I just want to be sure. So when we have a school policy that, when there are plans or actions that actually go against a school policy, is in fact the school committee that has to weigh in on that? Is that correct? Is that correct?
Yes.
Alright. So, we have a situation here where there has been a fundraiser planned with a company that has been out of compliance with the law, not just in Massachusetts for the past seven years, but across the United States, in multiple states. They have been mandated to shut down. They have been, had action taken against it for not paying taxes, for deceptive advertising. There are a lot of factual, there's a lot of factual information out there about this company, Custom Fundraising Solutions. The proprietor of the Boston one, the records are on there in the state, the Secretary of State's office, was asked either by court order or by the Secretary of State to shut down his prior business. He then became the proprietor of this Custom Fundraising Solutions, Boston. Seven years later, he has still not followed through on all of his requirements according to the law. His company is considered a commercial co-venture. As a, it's a highly regulated industry, highly regulated type of company. And he has been, remained out of compliance. If you were to go on and look for a financial report from the Attorney General's office for anything, for everything that he has collected on behalf of so many schools across the state, in our region, you cannot find one report that is mandated by law that shows how much was earned for that particular school or community group, and how much he earned in profit from these sales. And what's sad about it is that he has been increasingly preying on music programs to connect with, to run these fundraisers, which is really a shame because obviously funding across the region for public schools, as you well know, is really tight. And music programs in particular are suffering probably more so than typical academic needs. I've done a lot of research about this company, and it's upsetting to see the kind of actions he's been following, the kind of business practices. He continues to be despite, and Medfield has signed on with him to do this sale on September 22nd. I know that an agreement was signed last week to do this fundraiser between the principal, a department head, and the superintendent. I believe that this falls under the policy, two, three different school policies. This should have come before the school committee, before these agreements were signed. He continues to promote this sale without providing the mandatory disclosures. And there are, there is a law around deceptive advertising for this particular type of co-venture. I'm not going to go into details, I can give you all the background information here. But the specific policies, school policies that I'm referencing are KGA, R, JJER. One, fundraising activities may only be conducted through approved school support student groups. This fundraising is being conducted by a school department. The superintendent will inform the school committee of all of the, all of the ordinary fundraising events and special circumstances may request school committee approval for an event. I think when you partner with an organization, a company that is been, is under investigation from the Attorney General's office, that would be a special circumstance that should require school committee approval. Prior communication from the department that is partnering with this event has made it mandatory for students to participate in this in order to get any kind of financial aid for a trip. That also is against school policy. They make it, a lot of the literature that they have put out require a, there's going to be a mandatory parent meeting being held, and they are going to be relying on students to disseminate advertising and promotional materials, which again is, unless it's approved by the superintendent, but again, the superintendent may seek the opinion of the school committee, and I haven't seen that happen yet. And that is school policy KHA. School policy KGA, R, JJER also says that students' names will not be provided to outside organizations or businesses. Now, that has not happened yet, I will tell you that, but I have seen from documentation from other schools that that has happened in other districts. So if this sale is going to proceed, it has to be absolutely certain that no student names are going to be provided to Custom Fundraising Solutions, Boston. The other requirement that I think is, would be troubling more so to the MTA is that the various agreements I've seen mandates that the charity partner is to do weekly email campaigns, campaigns to all building staff and feeder school staff, and put flyers in staff mailboxes. I would think that that would be a nuisance to staff based on another school policy. So I just, I'm asking for school committee input on your view on this fundraiser, and whether or not you have, you feel you have the authority to weigh in based on our existing school policies.
Yeah.
And I mean, I'd recommend that we just have Jeff investigate this and bring back some information.
Cause I need more facts.
Yeah, cause we don't, we're not aware of things happening in the schools, you know. I mean, I agree about the data privacy piece, which is something I was gonna bring up later on in the year. But, because it's currently hearsay, that, you know, get some factual things.
I agree with Leo.
Yeah. And you've reached out to all parties? Okay. So we'll, we'll take another advisement and we'll get more facts. Thank you. Anything else? Alright, new business. Elementary report card study, or report card update, I should say.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The elementary principals are here, so they have a quick presentation, and they'll be able to answer any questions that you may have about the new assessment and their plan for implementation this year.
Well, good evening, everybody. Thanks for having us in. We're really excited about this, and thank you for postponing it, cause we were kinda just finishing up stuff at the end of the year, and Jeff, through you guys, had asked if we could come in the summer. So, first of all, I'm here with Dr. Billsborough, Principal Memorial, and Mrs. Caulfield, who is the principal of the WeLok, in case you haven't met her yet. Just a little bit about the committee itself, I think that you have the report card, did you get that copied in your packet? So, that's a copy of the first grade report card, and that's not a finalized one, that's a work in progress, and as we go through that, there's already been slight changes. It's just we can't change it all at once in the summer, because it goes through Aspen, and it would cost a little bit of money to have it being changed. So, when, when we were sitting down talking with teachers at all three buildings, we looked at, you know, something that we needed to do in our purpose, which is right up here on the slide, that we have the current standards base, which a lot of our curriculum runs through, and we wanted to make sure that we had a report card that married that. We also wanted to, from, you know, working with Jeff for the last five years, is one of the things that Missy and I, and Donna, and now Holly, we really try to work on consistency between the three schools. So this is going to be a cohesive K to five that includes all the subjects. So if you have a first grader and a fifth grader, the report card's gonna look very much similar, the only difference will be the crosswalk, the learning crosswalks that happen through the frameworks. And again, it provides parent consistent feedback, you know, from building to building, so it's one thing that they don't have to say, oh, I got this report card at Memorial, now I gotta change, so it's the same rubric, both the academic and the social emotional learning. So, that was kind of our purpose, when we looked at the bigger question on what do we want a K to five Medfield, you know, student to look like leaving elementary school and going to the middle school. So, just so you know, the committee, so we put this out, this has been a couple of years running, so myself, Donna, and Missy, and now Holly will assume Donna's role, kind of as the co-chairs on this committee. And if you look there, we had classroom teachers from every grade level, we also had special educators, and also specialists. It was really important that we were meeting with people from all throughout the district that would have any impact on the curriculum. So, they were all on the committee weighing in, and as you, as we move on, they played an integral role with this. Our norms that we had, you know, we wanted to presume positive intention, cause anytime you're looking to kind of modify or adapt or change something, it can, you know, rub some people the wrong way. So we wanted to make sure that we're open and everybody, you know, had their time to speak, and then we would come to a vote to try to come to a consensus after it went back to the schools. We wanted to, you know, encourage and accept everyone's input, because again, I think the best way that we would come out of this at the end was if it was classroom teachers, if it was specialists, special education, really important to us. And we really have spent a lot of time talking about, it might not be unanimous, but what it means to be a consensus is that you can live with this moving forward. And we wanted to make sure that we adhere to the agenda and respect time, because a lot of these meetings took place from 3:30 or well, 5 o'clock after school. So, really important work, we didn't want to take time away from the kids, but we wanted to make sure we respect, because a lot of people have, you know, outside commitments, families, et cetera, so we did that. And probably the biggest job for the people on the committee that we wanted was to act as a conduit. So, if you had a fourth grade teacher on there and the stuff was going on, they would go back for their grade level meeting, and they would let them know what we had talked about, get their input, so at the start of the next meeting, we could talk about what the feedback was. So even if you weren't on the committee, we wanted to make sure that decisions weren't being made inside a vacuum, and that everybody's voice was heard with that. So, again, just some of the things that we've accomplished, as I said, we started on this about two years ago. Again, very big task, because it deals with, obviously the report card, but deals with curriculum. But we did create a K to five standards crosswalk between all the grades and the curriculum areas. There is a subject here for special place for academics in the specialist content areas. One of the things that was happening in the elementary schools was that the specialists were kind of an insert that were put in, and their line items were really generic with that. And all three of us, Donna, Missy, myself, and Holly feels the same way, that they are an important part. We want a well-rounded child, and I think all of us want a Medfield, we wanted to make sure that they had a seat at the table, and they were included in the report card, so it wasn't like they were excluded. So we're really proud of that and happy about that. And the other thing, obviously with, I know a lot of you are involved with the social emotional learning committee, we have a social emotional section, and it's not like when we went to school where it completes homework, raises their hand, it's really tied into the castle standards that's on there, as well as what we're doing here in Medfield. So if you can see that on the first grade report card, it's really great, and it's the same going through if you're in first grade or you're in fifth grade. So it's really what we're looking for kids to, to grow and become. There's two scoring scales, which is great, because right now, I think Dale Street might have two or three on its own, and then Memorial and WeLok are very similar, but again, slightly different. So now, if you're a parent and you know what the rubric is, it's gonna be the same rubric as you're going through. And, you know, we talked in January, I believe, we used a professional development day, where we had all of the classroom teachers, all the special, all elementary staff come in, so to make sure that we weren't, you know, we were still midway through the process, but we wanted to bring them in to get any and all their feedback at that time, so we could go back to the drawing table. So again, really trying to get back at those conduits, but making sure that everybody, you know, was able to speak their mind and see what they were doing with the report card. So the structure on there, there's, you know, they, we have the three standards on there, which I'll talk a little bit in a minute. So we have the content standards, we also have what they call learning behaviors, and also the social emotional. Now again, the content standards are typical that you would see in probably a lot of elementary school report cards, but again, if, if you're familiar with the standards, all of the content areas have academic behaviors. A lot of times, the math is the one that's kinda the most popular and trendy, and what we found a couple of years ago, when we changed our report card slightly at Dale Street to meet the envisioned program, was that we had the academic behaviors on there, so parents could, that's more of the life skills that they're gonna have to do, rather than the exact content area. So when you talk about we want them to know and be able to do things, the academic practices are great. So what we did is, as a committee, we took the academic practices, we didn't put all of them on for each content to make the report card super big, we consolidate them, and we looked to see what were the most important ones we saw, which would give parents a great representation of, of what their kids were doing in school. This is another, you know, great chart that we were able to show the teachers. So if you look at, for instance, grade three, grade three had nine, has 92 indicators on their current report card. By, by being able to consolidate it, even though we were expanding the SEL section, we would put the academic behaviors on there, with the help of Jamie Callahan and Ellie Wells through the math and the reading section of it, it went down to 62 indicators. So, much more manageable for teachers, better reporting out for, for parents if they'd be able to read. You'll notice that the fourth and fifth grade have slightly more, but I felt that our report card, to be quite honest, was a little bit more generic. So when you got to ELA, it might have had three or four line items, where ELA obviously is a very big, big, you know, ticket item on what we need kids to be able to do. So, looking at this, I think the teachers felt very relieved that we were going to try to do something to take something off their plate, which, without sacrificing what the parents would be knowing about their students' academic ability. So if you look up here, so this is gonna be, just to let you know, a little different, so the social emotional will handle those castle standards, and on your report card, you might see that it's a U up there, because as the committee thought more about it, they decided to go from the usually on there over to often, so that was ratified by the committee at the end of the year, so it wasn't able to be put on yet on this report card. But Beth Leducia, who's our data manager person, has been absolutely fantastic in helping us along the way, so I really want to send kudos to her. So just so you see, if you're looking, you're saying, well, I see a U here, but a O here. But all the other things up there, we went round and round with the four, should we go on a three-point scale or a four-point scale? But I really give credit to the people on the committee, cause the wording with, you know, underneath each one of those four, three, two, ones, are really, I think, depicting, and if you're a parent, no matter how much, you know, you're understanding about the standards in education, I think it's a clear picture of where your child is at that point. So really happy that there's gonna be those two, they're right up at the top, as you see, and it will be on the first grade report card, the third grade, the fifth grade, it's very consistent if you're having kids in multiple buildings, or as they're traveling through the district. So again, this is just kind of a little snapshot here, so you see up at the top that the academic behaviors, this is math, so again, I believe there's seven academic math behaviors, we decided, okay, we're gonna look at these, there were a couple that were a little bit repetitive, so we were able to kind of merge them in, so the academic behaviors are right up at the top. We had a lot of discussion at the meetings where I believe we left off that the grade four and five might grade the academic behaviors, and they're gonna leave them on the report card for grades one and two and three. So, they just might not have felt that they were ready to grade them, but they're gonna go through the same process of that. But as they get older, a little bit more, and there's a little bit more evidence of what's going on in those, that was a decision that we had left off with in the spring, but as we talk more on this PowerPoint, we're going to pilot, so we'll see if that continues to stay. So again, when we're looking here, this was a huge part of it, like when you look at specials, and I can speak for Dale Street, whether it's, you know, world language, or music, or physical education, really, really important in, you know, representing the whole child. And we really just didn't like, the principals kind of were, you know, very stern on this, that it, it has to be included in the report card. We can't have a flyer and insert, because we really feel it's not doing the justice that it really deserves. So, that is on the report card now, as you can see on the first grade report card that you have there. Another thing that I wanted to, we wanted to point out here, is that when you're looking, so again, if you, you have, you're the art teacher here, again, they're having a little bit extra with the social emotional, they see them kind of once a week or twice a week, but if you look at the content standards with the creating and the presenting, it just, from what the report card is now, I think a little bit more generic, it really hits in what their expectations are, you know, as teachers, and what they're giving to the students there. So, really putting, it puts a good emphasis on the important work that they're doing each and every day and throughout the week.
And we have to hope that it gives parents a better idea of what is actually happening in during the special subjects. As you can see, it goes into much more depth, what's happening in classrooms than the generic language that was on our previous report card.
So, here's our next step, so the report card, we're going to pilot this report card to students per class, and the special education specialists are gonna do the same exact thing. The parents aren't going to see it, so the regular report card will still go home, and then what we're gonna do is, we're gonna continue to meet monthly with the report card committee, gain the feedback from the teachers, that they'll report out at a common planning time. But at the same time, we're going to start to roll this report card out with our site councils, so parents can kind of see it, offer some of their feedback, we can share with them what feedback we're getting from that. And then moving forward from that, if this is approved by, you know, Dr. Morrison and the school committee, you know, likes this, then what we'd like to do is roll it out fully next year in September, and then we would be having parent nights in the fall, you know, before the report card came out in December. So they were fully aware of why we were doing it, what it looks like, what this means, what that means, and give them a little bit more of a picture.
I have a couple questions.
Sure.
The first one is, how will you select the children? Is it a random selection, even within the Spen environment? And the other is, I just want to clarify that the children who are selected for this, will their parents be notified, or is that simply, because that, this particular rollout will not be going home with them, that teacher will be doing essentially two report cards for them.
Exactly.
So, will their parents know that they are part of that pilot program, or not? But I don't care either way, I'm just interested.
Yeah, right now, I think we left it with the committee that they weren't going to know about that, because again, you might kind of start, well, why isn't my student getting that and everything?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So where they're getting the same report card everybody else is, it's just what the teacher can do is, they can decide, again, if they're doing it, they can do the whole one, you know, in December, they can do kind of three quarters of it, but we're also gonna be asking our special education teachers to do it with one or two of the kids on their caseload as well, and hopefully different from the one that the teacher is maybe doing in class, or maybe similar, so they could collaborate. But we decided right now, you know, rather than we're just kind of trying to, you know, get our feet wet a little bit with it, that we weren't gonna, you know, because it's not gonna really, you know, involve the student really whatsoever.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I think essentially what we're looking for is more the indicators and how the teachers are grading them and making sure that they're consistent.
Right, consistency, right, and that they're actually usable.
You know, you and I could read something and interpret it two different ways, and we want to make sure that through those discussions, that we're saying, okay, what information might we need to make sure that there's enough consistency across your group?
Yeah, well, the only thing I would say, you may take a subset of that and introduce the parents to that, because you're gonna get instantaneous questions about that, like, I know that I'm gonna get questions about that from my wife at home when she looks at this, and I could say. And so, to preempt that, there may be like an FAQ that you could build out of that to say, you know, or a guide to the report card, and I know it's a lot of work, so I, you know, I'm not trying to recommend a ton more work, but, I mean, of what's the, what are the, not the expected outcomes, but what are the goals, right? Like, particularly the art one, I think it's great to have the specials on there, like I completely support it, but it's so subjective in that sense, and I think that's, that's gonna be some of the questions that will come up in that sense, but so you could preempt that, there may be a reason to take a subset of the group and say, let's approach these parents about that, to see what questions they may have as a result.
Great suggestions, and we talked about that FAQ, so, again, we just wanted to make sure that people on the committee did amazing work, but we didn't want to put too much on it at one time, as we're going through. And that's the same thing kind of with the parents, cause we know that the rollout with the parent, it has to be there, and we have to take their feedback. So we want to make sure that we spend a good amount of time, you know, if this all goes to fruition, in the fall next year, so it's well beyond, you know, this is what it is, we piloted, these were some things that we made changes, so that they can see, you know, kind of the good, the bad, the ugly of what was there. But I think in FAQ, a lot of towns offer that, and I think that's a great suggestion.
It's just work to put together, and, and I understand that, but a short one, like, above those targeted directions, and a lot of that will come out, the curriculum work too, that will align to this, you know, that we're obviously expecting too, so that's great.
I just have a clarification question too. I, I was 100%, and I still am, behind, I think this is a great idea, aligning all the schools, so that it's the same. But honestly, when I saw this, I was like, whoo, it's, it's a lot, you know? And especially for, I mean, I'm trying to get used to it in middle school, and then it, I think Anna May, and maybe Jess, who are half middle schoolers, might agree too, it's been a little muddy trying to figure out the standards base in middle school, so I'm not trying to impose that on this. But, it's my understanding that, you know, when my child who just finished third grade, I saw his report card, and a three is pretty much, you got it, right? And somewhere along the line, it became kind of in the back of my head, a four is just above and beyond, like you don't really get that many fours? Am I wrong? Or do, are we shooting for all fours, like, has that changed? Do you know what I'm saying?
I see what you mean, you're looking for, what is the scaling, has the scaling changed?
Right, right, it has the scaling changed, and if so. That's my first question, and then to build on top of that, and even the way you set up, and I was sharing this with my soon-to-be freshman, the slide where you showed the social emotional, and then the content standard, it directly lined up, I don't think that was on purpose, but like, C, four, O, three, and I think that was not on purpose. But, when you kind of look at it in that vein, so, okay, I'm okay, I'm looking at my child's report card, and he's got threes, he's doing what he should do, he's doing great, then his social emotional, he's getting Os, is that a three? He's doing great. Come to find out, an O is not a three, you want to be a C every time, so there's not that, it was just like, it's across the board not lining up? Do you see where the confusion is?
Absolutely, yeah, and I think with, looking with that, of course, we all would want fours and U's, you know, or Cs rather, but if you have the O, you know, that, they're kids too, so we just have to make sure.
Well, that's just it, teacher said, I haven't spent enough time with your son or daughter to know if their, this behavior is consistent, so when can I give them a C, maybe not, you know, it just, it's, the subjectivity is what Leo was saying.
How often is consistent, really?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Should we just merge those together?
It, that, that's a really, really muddy scale right there, that's, that's just my mind.
We could make the argument that, that regular traditional grading is subjective as well.
Oh, of course.
Sure, oh, yeah, yeah.
You can always make that argument, whether you look at standards base or traditional grading. I think, you know, one of the biggest challenges we have as a, as a, as a district, is that all of us went to school with A, B, C, D, E, you know, we all know that grading system. And everyone tries to equate a four with an A, and a three with a B, and, and that's, so that's the educational piece, I think, that those folks are gonna do. I just, I wouldn't akin this anything to what's happened in the middle school. I mean, this, I mean, nothing.
And I didn't mean to draw that.
No, I know, yeah, but this.
I, I got burnt at the middle school, and I don't want to let, you know, my fourth grader get Os, and me not say, ooh, that's gonna bite you in the butt.
I think this, this process has been very different, you know, and much different, and I think streamlined in the sense that it was, you know, monthly, and that all three schools were involved, and three principals were involved, and, and, you know, it wasn't just redesigning assessment, but it was making it consistent across the three schools. So I, I know it, because you say SPR, you're gonna put, but it's a totally different process, you know, and I think that there'll be things coming out in the fall from the middle school that will, you know, tighten that up as well, so.
Yeah, I think this is extremely important work, like, just this to look at different aspects of a child's learning, right, and where they are on that, and to, you know, reflect on, nobody, you know, I guess, I guess, I, I think my child is less likely to remember they got a three in one of those 63 standards, as I am to remember that I failed penmanship in fourth grade from Mrs. Patso's, God rest her soul, so.
Leo, you do remember it.
Yeah, exactly. Because it was only seven spots, and, okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think looking at it, and Missy brought it up early, I think that's one of the reasons we, we talked to Jeff, and we said, we think we want to move to a pilot this year, because working with that, and going back and forth with the committee in common planning time, it hopefully will get us a more consistent vision of what it is, and not have that subjectivity to it with that.
It's not unlike what we did for teacher evaluation. So teacher evaluation, we spent numerous hours calibrating what it looks like. You know, so we had all of the principals, all the department heads, union representation, all of us in the room, and we just had workshops of three hours at a time with a consultant, looking at, what do you think this is, and what do you think that is, and calibrating so that we had a consistent understanding of what exemplary or proficient look like in Medfield.
Right.
It's very similar to what, you know, those folks are doing now, you know, that, that process this year.
So the pilot itself will give you the kind of matrix to be able to truly make a, a decision around what a consistent versus a usually is.
Yeah, yeah, we've talked to teachers about a teacher support document, and we're looking at it to say, you know, going through, we didn't want to do a teacher support document for every one of these things, if teachers didn't really feel like they needed that, you know, so going through the pilot will, again, help us out, again, giving, and it's, you know, we feel, the people on the committee and the principals feel that it's, it's one of those things in education where it's gonna be best for kids, it's gonna be best for parents, and it's gonna be best for teachers, you know, so, you know, it seems like it's gonna be a win-win-win, but again, it is a little different, and it is hard, because when you have all the standards, like our, the expectation of the teachers is they need, they need to teach the standards, and there are a lot of standards, you can't put all of them on a report card, but at least it looks concise now, where the, you know, the weight is in there, where we're walking the walk with the social emotional, that's in there, and much better than it has been in other report cards. And with the academic behaviors, we really feel like this is a great 21st century report card, that, you know, we're hoping can be a stepping off point for other districts if they're looking at report cards.
Actually, that was the one part that I, not the one part, but it was the part that I really looked at and said, I really appreciate that, because it is the, the skill, like you said. like you said, the life skill that that kid will take forward. You know, they may blow it on a standard here or there, but if they're really kind of drilling down on those particular skills, they'll be able to unpep the skills to kind of make up and be able to communicate to their teacher if they're not. That's the other part of it, you know, it's a two-way road.
I just have a couple of comments and a question. First of all, thank you. This is a very thoughtful process and I see that and it's very methodical and I really appreciate that and your willingness to pilot it and get more comments and it really is, you've done this very well, so thank you. And also, I appreciate how the specials are embedded and more so, it symbolically represents what we value in our community about the well-rounded students. So I, I'm grateful for that. But just a question, just over the years, comments of various things. Now, can I assume that there is a threshold that, or a common practice within each of the schools where there's a threshold of a child perhaps not, I suppose, avoiding the surprise, getting the report card opening and, what? I didn't know what, you know, is there? Because I suppose, as I said, over the years, sometimes parents get a little alarmed that they wait for the report card to be alerted of an issue. So is there a threshold, so to speak, a common practice that is perhaps being implemented or always has been?
I think I can say that we have ongoing conversations and I'm pretty confident that I can speak across all three buildings for that with teachers about no surprises. Parents should not walk in to a conference, to a report card, to anything like that hearing something negative or really positive for that matter for the very first time. So we talk a lot about, you know, if a child is struggling and they've gone through our SST process, parents are notified immediately upon a child being taken through SST. It's in our flyer that's posted online, conversations about it, we make sure as a team that we're checking in with the teachers to make sure that they've done that. But I think it's one of those, you know, it's respect for parents and what's right by kids to make sure that we are keeping parents informed throughout this whole process. It has to be that partnership and if you're walking in and not knowing what's going on with your child, we're not doing our job.
Yeah, no, I think the teachers are doing a great job and we're really looking at that thing about trying to, you know, test less and assess more. So whether it's, you know, an exit ticket at the end of the lesson and stuff, teachers have got so much better at that. So, you know, during the time, they'll shoot the email, you know, and they're making those collaborations, you know, efforts with parents and saying, hey, just want to give you a heads up, whether it's an academic or behavioral. But yeah, I mean, we're, report cards and conferences are really around November 30th, the first week of December, that, you know, that's, you know, we are, we are very staunch that parents should be notified if there's any prob, or a positive, because there's, you know, a lot of times I think we, we don't do as good a job as a kid that way too, because, you know, oh, the kid's doing well or whatever and you kind of almost forget about it. It's almost like that, you know, the negativity sometimes can be more trendy than, than the popular ones. So we want to do it on both ends. Certainly the one that needs some intervention with that, but also, you know, the, the person that needs that positive, you know, rise them up because they're consistently doing a good job.
Super. Well, thank you very much.
This is not the end of their report though, right? I think we just interrupted them.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, was this the end?
Yeah.
Well, I think, I think the next one was questions.
Okay, so I have a question?
Absolutely.
All right. So this is something that I, I hope not to embarrass any of my children, but this is one of those things that I've, I've seen on report cards that I've always had a question about on the third term. It's what I call the third term two, where it says the student is progressing towards grade level, but it's June and there is no more progression towards that grade level. So obviously, and then I think that there, when you have a child who's consistently getting twos in certain areas, or is ending up with that at the end of the year, is that part of the ongoing discussion and identification? Because it's kind of a, to say that a child is progressing towards grade level, you are also saying that the child has not achieved the standards.
The current, the current report card.
On the current report card. But it also looks as though it may well be on this report card.
Progressing towards a standard, not grade level.
Right. So when you're looking at content area scoring, it says two, the student is progressing toward meeting the standard, but may require additional support or instruction. But when that comes home to you on the final report card in June, it's almost like there's a, you need a, you need somebody to tell you where the football's gonna go, right? Like, so if your child has a 504 in place already or a P in place already, there's that structure. But how do we translate that message to the next, next area so that the next teacher will know, this child really didn't make their content standards and we've got the summer slide, you know, like how, is that part of the active conversation that we have now? And how do we bring parents into that conversation as well, I think? Because I think that, you know, like not every kid's gonna make threes and fours by the end of the year. Most don't, I would assume, I don't know, I work at people's report cards. But that is part of the conversation in terms of transitioning between kids. And do we, do we imbue that with the alarm that maybe we should when we see a kid coming out with a two and a content standard that's, and it's, it's the end of third grade and they're making that until fourth? Like, I guess that that's always been kind of a, an area of interest. I mean, obviously, I truly appreciate the amount of support that I've seen in the schools, but it's certainly something to be thinking about. I'm not gonna put you on the spot right now about that, but if you have any feedback or?
No, but I, I think you, you bring up a great question. And yeah, you want to talk with the parents because it's our responsibility as educators to make sure that these kids are making progress. Again, effective progress, whatever that means for each individual student. So again, there might be an area where they continue to struggle with, but you're talking with the parents, this is what we have in plan. And if they're going from building to a different building, then we're making sure we're having those conversations. So at the end of last year, at the elementary level and also going to Blake, is, you know, our reading and math specialists, we're kids that might struggle, they're meeting and talking about that type of stuff. Our special education department, having that consistent team chair going through to two to six, for instance, in my level is great. And then the other thing that, you know, was teachers were really wanting this in the last couple of years we've done it, is having the face-to-face meetings. So the teachers have the kids for two, three weeks or whatever in the fall, but then they meet with, the fourth grade teachers will meet with the third grade teachers as well. So that stuff is all there for us to hopefully make sure that that transition for the student.
So that, that fourth grade teacher then kind of has a bit of a bead on a kid, but is able to have the context to have that knowledge transferred? Because that actually is really important to be able to have a face, a name, and a context for a kid.
And we're talking with Mary Brule as well, with some of the work that we did this summer is around our district accommodation plan and how that fits in. So, you know, if this student is a, you know, is a good student, but they just need a couple of these different things, how can we make sure that that next year's teacher on day one can get that? And what's the most viable form for that teacher to get that? But I think we're really, you know, our, we have common planning time even for our specialists. So again, the guidance staff and the psychology staff is meeting with those teacher, those specialists, you know, that are outside the classroom, you know, that first or second Friday when they're back. So they're kind of, you know, these are the kids that might have this situation going on, this is the best way to, you know, accommodate or modify different things. So we're really always trying to get better, but I think we're really doing a good job about the collaboration, at least within the school, moving from grade to grade, within the building and also across buildings as well.
We worked real hard to break down the fire alarm.
Right, exactly. And I have, I have seen that.
I think one of the key pieces that really gonna help this is the, the forthcoming communication more about the curriculum and what the expectation of that curriculum is, right? Because that's what this is reporting on. And we got the report card this year, we had obvious questions that, you know, like, oh, those math skills weren't met? When did we know about those math skills? They weren't on any website, they weren't communicated. And I know we're in that, we're in that work in, you know, then progress, progressing towards, you know, improving that. And I think that will help. Meet, exactly what you're talking about. What does that two actually mean? Oh, well, I saw this consistently in your work because I was supporting you with that. But, you know, there's that current, that disconnect that exists. And so I think that's gonna help inform, understanding what the report card means too.
Thank you. You answered my question very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a significant amount of work and I think will be very positive. I'm interested to see how the pilot pulls out.
Yeah, excellent, thank you.
Very much so.
Get some great conversation going about a lot of different factors.
Yeah, yeah. Great job.
Thank you.
Thanks for having us.
Thanks.
And thank you, Holly, for standing up and solving.
All right, so we've got staffing updates.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In your materials, you had our, our usual staffing update that we have in the first meeting. They've been a part of the induction and mentoring program the last couple of days. Christine and Nat and Susan Blackoff did an unbelievable job with that, bringing everyone in, really focusing on how we do business in the district in terms of instruction and learning on the first day and then the nuts and bolts of, of the technology and everything else that we have to, today was the boot camp with that and they met with their mentors for, for a couple hours. That went really well too. So real happy with that, really excellent group. Again, we typically get folks from other districts that want to come here. And you'll see there's a few long-term subpositions in there. We've had some teachers that have had changes in their, in their life in terms of spouses getting different jobs and moving and we have some non-renewal positions that were here too. We renewed some teachers last year, so real happy about the new group that's in and looking forward to working with them going forward.
I'm very excited too because it looks like you've got a full team now.
We do.
Yay.
It's great.
All right, summer project update?
Michael, can you give a quick update on that? You saw in your materials that there is a lot, there was a lot going on this summer. And Michael's gonna highlight just some of the larger projects, but it's still great having Amy on board. She's done a great job coordinating a lot of these projects and working with the vendors and especially the big, like the bigger ones, like the Blake Fire Alarm System, which is a huge project and, and some others. So, Michael.
So we did, we were very busy this summer with a lot of projects. Again, want to thank Amy for being on board and coordinating and all. Also a big, a big thanks to Owen. He actually coordinated the whole entire new phone system throughout all the schools. He's actually still doing it right now.
As we speak.
As we speak. So, so the, the team in place has been great. We're happy with all of our directors and we're thinking that, you know, that we won't be able to do all this work without them. So a couple of things that I want to highlight that we're really proud of is last time we re-lined all the parking lots, was it three years ago? So we were able to re-line all the parking lots, fire lanes and crosswalks throughout all the schools. And that was in coordination with the police department and DPW to get that done. We also repaid sections of Wheelock, so that was done this summer, working again with DPW and incorporating our projects within their projects, saves the town money. And so that's, it was a perfect time to do those things. The new phone system that we spoke about, that's a district-wide initiative, the phone systems we talked about during the capital project, that it was, they were old, they weren't integrated, they weren't working properly. So now we have standard.
And no longer supported by the company.
Correct, and no longer supported by the company.
When things went down, we couldn't get them.
Our new phone systems now have a direct line to the police department where the police department can now, when the call comes in, they know exactly what room the call is coming from. Where the old phone systems, they would get the direct line, but they couldn't tell what part of the building the actual, you know, call was coming from. So, but that's all new technology and that's why we're upgrading. We, we are working on the feasibility study on the school roofs and we're continuing to do that in early fall. We got the engineers out, they put a scope together. Now we have to go out to bid for them to evaluate, do a final evaluation on those. A great initiative that we, that actually I give all the credit to Amy. She worked with N-Star and we were able to relamp all the buildings. Currently being done right now, there's a crew working right now in this building. It's a hundred thousand dollar project to relamp all the lighting in all the schools. It's gonna save us money throughout the year because they're all LED, but the cost to do that project was a hundred thousand dollars and it was all paid for by a resource. So we're just thrilled about that, that we were able to apply and receive it and move forward with it. Here at the, at the high school, we did some work at the practice field, the football practice field. There was repairs done to the bleachers at the, in the, at the stadium. And then the gym floor was refinished. We did some work in the cafeteria, changing some seating. And we installed a camera in the gymnasium for the athletic department. At the middle school, the big project at the middle school was the FA system installation, which is the new fire alarm system. It's being tested this week. I think they have one more.
They test it all day, every day.
I think they have, they have, they're gonna do testing Friday and they have a last day of testing, I believe is Monday. But that was, that was a huge project. We're happy with our vendor and it's going very, very well.
That actually started at the end of last year at night, so after the kids left, they started pulling wires and doing all that. So they'd be ready to go this summer. And they've been great to work with.
So what we did was because.
It's been a solid two-month project at this point?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Because of when they were doing the fire alarm system, the fire department, the fire chief and the police chief came in and said, you know, can we redo the signage? And because it was confusing to them, the way that the system was designed, so we changed the whole system of labeling classrooms and the hallways and the bathrooms. We worked again with the fire department and the police department to get a system that everyone was happy with. So that was also done during this whole project. And then at Dale Street, Dale Street, there wasn't that much work done. There was the re-lining of the parks, excuse the parking lot. We did a renovation of the LMC. And then we also installed new matting in all the playgrounds at all three elementaries. So that was done this summer. So those again were, we, they were old, they needed to be replaced and we were able to replace them. At Wheelock, again, we fixed the potholes. We did a, we, yes.
Sorry.
Credit to DPW, I had, again, just working with the town is giving us, saving both the town and school money. The walk-in refrigerator was repaired at Wheelock. We did a lot of work in the kitchen area at Wheelock, which was needed. The refrigerator was done. There's a couple of other mechanical issues in the, in the, in the kitchen area that were all resolved this summer. And then at Memorial, because of the increased enrollment at Memorial, we had to install new cubbies. Those were being installed yesterday and today, I believe they were done today. So we had, we had new cubbies that were installed in one of the wings, which is I think the preschool wing, correct? I think it was the preschool wing at Memorial.
And we also needed them down at the other wing too. We added two.
That's correct. And then we relocated a couple of rooms. I think PT and OT rooms were relocated. Again, we worked on the playgrounds and we installed new projectors in the classrooms at Memorial. So I didn't go through all of the projects. There was a lot of minor projects, a lot of painting that got done over the summer, a lot of electrical work that got done. But we were very busy and I'm knocking on wood that we were done by next Tuesday.
I gotta say, there was, there is a lot of work here. I got just a couple of questions. One, about the, how are the lasers used on the softball field?
Well, this is like a geeky fun question, right?
No, well, I was just curious. So what is a laser regated? I mean.
So what they do is they, they, they come in and, and it's, they come in with, it's a system, they come in with lasers and they look.
To accuracy.
The accuracy of the whole entire field. And they let us know where areas that have to be addressed because, to prevent injuries, this is why we do it. Just like we do with the artificial filter.
Just like the dips and stuff that.
Yeah, little dips and stuff.
Oh, totally get it, okay.
Yeah, when it's all gravel in the infield, I gotta, laser grade that.
And this is kind of chipping away at our fields kind of survey that we did several years ago. We were looking at the, at the football field and what we need to do with that.
It's a system that they were using on artificial field turf and now we're using them on grass.
I also liked the vape sensors, that was.
So those are in progress.
That's, that's a good idea.
So our nurses wrote a grant for that. And once they're installed, Robert's gonna send a notice home to parents so they know that they're in there. But we, you know, we really want to make sure that our kids are making the right choices and certainly vaping in our bathrooms is not the right choice. And also, there's kids that don't want to be a part of that, that don't want to be in the bathroom when it happens and, you know, they don't want to be accused of doing it. So, once those are all set, we're gonna send something home to parents, but that was all grant funded by the Norfolk County DA's office.
That's an excellent idea. And then how many bicycles were recovered for the potholes at Memorial?
That's a good question. That's a good question.
Do you know if the, well, you would know, the blinds that were supposed to be fixed in the Blake Gym that the Bedfield Basketball?
I believe those were done, I didn't, that wasn't on that, so there was two systems that we, we were looking at.
Yeah, okay.
And the vendor, we ended up going with the same system that we had, I believe those are done. That was one of the minor ones. And that was paid for by the basketball youth.
Yep.
So, so we're, we're just very grateful that we have, we're getting funding from other sources to get these projects done.
Great, thank you.
Sounds great.
Well done, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Michael.
We have a request of date change for November seventh meeting?
Right, so we had made that decision last spring before MASC put out their joint conference.
I should've probably figured that out.
Yeah, so that's the same night, or the same day as MASS, MASC Joint Conference, so I figured that usually folks go down to that, so it didn't make sense to have a meeting that night. If you are available on the fourteenth, that would be a natural, the next Thursday, that'd be a natural choice, but you wanna take a look at that and see what works?
Yeah, it works for me, I put it on my calendar.
I'm good, I think I'm good.
Tim, does that work for you?
Tim?
I see him talking, but.
I can see it going.
Tim?
Just nod, nod if you can.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, thank you. Alright, do we?
Alright, so we'll change that.
Okay. Great.
So I know that I've already registered for that in being that you are. Well, I won't, yeah, but you're probably going down. Did you?
I missed the early bird too.
I am, I'm still questionable for my work.
I, I know, I think anytime that one of us gets to go, it's, it's a degree.
Yeah.
Program, so.
Super.
Great, thank you.
Alright, the handbook approvals?
So what, what we talked about last year was at our first meeting of the year, we'd look at handbooks each year and there were any things that, you know, you felt you wanna change or. Any things that were added or deleted that we could talk about them, but essentially the, the changes that were made in the, in every single one of our handbooks. Were all the recommendations that came out of Mary's work, to update all of that civil rights information, all of that, so we made all those changes. We've given them to our attorneys, they've gone through it all and they felt they were fine, so I just asked if you would just give it your blessing so we can post those and. Get them out to parents when, when school starts.
Okay, I just had a couple of questions.
Sure.
And that is, I'm. Yeah, sure.
What was your question?
My question is, for example, the elementary handbook, first of all, I like that it's just one handbook versus three different ones.
They have the addendums read building.
Yep, yep, that's, I read through that, that's good, my question is, for example, the Blake handbook. I noticed that in the elementary school handbook, it, it encompasses our homework policy that we implemented last year. Yet, when you go to the Blake handbook, it's not, but, so I don't know if that's done on purpose or.
I think it's just not as explicit as it is within the elementary, same thing I think with the high school.
I suppose, you know, now that we're moving forward, there's more cohesiveness.
Right.
You know, even the look, you know, of, of the handbooks, maybe it, you know, that's not so important, but, but content, I just thought. It would be nice to have some consistency.
Sure.
And.
Homework, so that, middle school and high school?
Yes.
Same remember the high school as well, yeah.
Make it look exactly the same.
So, and then in terms of posting and why I'm so in tune to this is because of experiences. And I realize that the high school made a note of this, but not Blake, but at Blake, it says, under the homework guidelines. Post every day on the website and post every day and on the website. In the high school one, fortunately, now it says by the end of the teacher's day.
Right.
But Blake does not have by the end of the teacher's day, I think in the past we've had issues where teachers would post at night. And it was due tomorrow and.
It also just respects their working day and their contract day as well.
Okay.
My one or two comments was about the homework policy, also, I think I'd like to see us kind of look at the dress policy. It's, as we kind of think about how we choose.
Dress code in the handbook or your policy?
Hand, in the handbook, as I looked at them.
And it's different, because Blake is, is just the cleavage that, you know, and then where you get into the, I gotta say it. And then, but when you get to the high school, I think it's more appropriate attire, you know, so it's, it's the language and be conscious.
I mean, you wanna think about like, you know, and Nat and I have actually talked about this, like the, the GM kind of dress code is dress appropriately.
Yeah.
And then, you know, but there's things like. It's, Y is an off the shoulder shirt, verboten, you know, but a tank top is perfectly okay for, for our athletes to wear. It seems to me that there's a, a judgment being made there about.
Well, maybe, but, you know, I think we can look at this, there's nothing wrong with us, just because it was bad fashion in nineteen eighty-three doesn't mean that, you know.
But, but I think that, you know, it's always important to kind of keep our eyes open for the, the smaller things, it's not what we say, it's what we do. Or how we say it, and the other thing is, is I just wanna make a, a note that if there are kind of independent websites within schools that have links back to the student handbook. Let's make sure that they're linking to the most current handbook, 'cause I, I did find one website that had the two thousand fourteen PDF.
Okay.
So, and I, I can tell you which one it was.
Which one was it?
Blake Guidance, well, I think it was just one link, but I was being lazy, didn't go back to the Blake. Website and the main website and then I pulled up the thing, oh god, do they look like this anymore? Yeah, so.
Interesting, 'cause, you know, they, the high school does have a handbook committee, so it's teachers and kids that are on that. And so they, they review that each year with Mr. Spurling, and I believe Blake only uses that with the, the site council, the site council looks at Blake? Okay, I believe they're the only ones that look at or review outside of administrations.
But over time, if they could work towards consistency, not only in language, but also in aesthetics, look, you know, it's just. The high school one is very user friendly and just, you know, you can click on it, so just small things.
Sure.
But in relation to the high school handbook, not only the attire comment, but also I know the cell phone use. Are not to be used, so it says it's not to be used, yet they are used, and I know this is an ongoing conversation. And I know Tim is working on a committee around cell phone use, and I know there's a group of parents who are very passionate about this, so I think. That if we're saying it, we need to take action.
Amy, if you don't mind, I thought I was gonna have two comments, but that was one.
Great.
I think the, the only thing, I, I, we're not gonna change it anytime, you know, I think in the next couple of weeks. I think one minor thing is how the teachers interpret that and trying to gain more levels of consistency around it.
Around the cell phone use?
Correct, correct, so all it takes is one teacher who's a lot more liberal about allowing students to use it towards the end of a class. And they're texting other students, it's just causing distractions, that, if, if you looked at the survey we did amongst all the teachers. I'm not gonna go deep on this, but that was the one thing that I think, it's a minor tweak that you may be, you know, we may be able to do as, as you're thinking of. Kicking off with all the teachers next week, just more consistency would, I think, make it easier on, on everyone.
Good, thanks, Tim.
And I just had one more comment with the handbook, and that is the team captains. And it says that the team captains are voted on the conclusion of the previous season, but it doesn't say by whom. And I don't know if different teams have different practices, but sometimes it's just the students, sometimes it's the students and the coach. Or sometimes it's just the coach, so I'm, I'm wondering if that could be clarified, because I know a lot of parents and sometimes students get confused. And so if the by whom would be a wonderful add.
Anything else, sir? So is this something that you could approve tonight with those changes or does that make sense?
Yeah, absolutely, I mean, I think some of these things are longer conversations and I think it's important to bring them up.
The greatest thing about the way we're doing it now is it's ongoing with the document, you can just change it and it becomes.
Beautiful, right.
Yeah, so it works great.
Yeah, so there are a couple of little tiny things, but.
There's a lot of pertinent information to this year, but I guess it keeps it fresh and keeps fresh eyes on it, so it doesn't get stale, so, yeah, I kinda like that idea.
So, just, it's worth mentioning here only because I had a conversation with Mary about specifically cyberbullying. And the problem with it at Blake specifically, and I kinda just threw out something to her saying, would this be considered cyberbullying? And she said it has to occur more than once, and there's a definition in here of what cyberbullying is, but nowhere in there does it say what she said. Like she can't act on it until it's repeated.
Actually, and that's part of the policy that we're voting on tonight, it says it's repeated, so.
So she does, it's not.
So we can't insert that language, that's a good catch.
Okay, thank you.
Although it's not the policy yet, so I can see why it wouldn't be.
Wouldn't be there, yeah.
That language of the policy, but, but we can make it.
And that's sort of a new slippery slope, so I can see why it hasn't.
There's a lot of laws, a lot of that to supersede our policies, of course, as well.
Yeah.
And if it happens outside of school day but impacts education instruction.
Right, that's in there, it's just.
So do we have?
So, just one question, 'cause I wanna make sure I didn't, is it, anywhere do we document what the old was and the new, or is it? 'Cause it wasn't clear to me from the packet.
Oh, what the old one was versus what some of the changes are?
Correct.
I mean, I have, I have documents from the principals on that, I, I had them send me some information on what, other than what Mary has told us, which is the bulk of what the changes are. I can get that to you if that's helpful.
I think it would just, I, I think it would help, it would help us, you know, it's possible we read it, we didn't know what the change was.
Well, Tim, you can find them on the, the school committee website?
The actual changes?
The actual, yeah, so you can see the old version with the changes.
He's talking about handbook or policy?
Policy, right.
Oh, he's talking handbook, he's talking handbook.
Handbook, okay, no, no, I can interrupt.
If I scan a handbook, I just, you know, I mean, it, it would be helpful to see, look, high level, these are the eight things that.
Yep, sure.
Changes were made, so we're not comparing each year.
Right.
Yeah, perhaps in the new format, where we're using a little more technical resources, we can do a track changes and.
Yeah.
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah, because we talked about that last year, and, 'cause I do think that's important to track our changes, so we know when we did them, so if we can do them.
Sure.
We create, with the new consistency on the way it's being delivered, not only, it'll be more capable of doing that, but less labor.
Yeah. Super, so we have to vote on that.
Please.
Um, so do we have a motion to approve the handbooks, hand, handbooks with the mentioned amendments?
I, I motioned to approve the handbooks for all high schools for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year with the changes as noted.
One second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Unanimous? Great. School committee workshop?
So that was posted for Monday at five o'clock.
Okay.
I don't know if there's any other discussion on it, but it will be in this room.
Yep.
And I know that you folks wanted to have a mission statement and goals, is, is that the agenda item on that meeting, so.
Yeah, yeah, I would think so.
Do we get a facilitator for that or?
No.
If, if you could though, what would be helpful, 'cause each school has their own mission statement, so if we could do a little bit of homework on our own, so that we're prepared. If you could look at.
Hold it right on the handbook here.
We have the district one as well.
Yes, exactly, look at the district's various mission statements, I, I also think it's helpful to look at other districts and then maybe make some notes as to what's important to you. And then we can work from there.
Right, and this is the mission statement, just so TV land knows specifically about what the school committee's mission statement is, so that we can then drill down.
Correct.
On what it is that we feel our goals are for trying to meet.
Yep.
And kind of shift things if we need to or what we're doing well.
Excellent, alrighty, so, and other items since posting on the twentieth?
There'd be no others.
Okay, lovely, donations?
So in your materials, you had a couple of donations, both families requested to be anonymous on this, so I asked you to approve them. One is, like this donation of one thousand dollars to the Medfield Schools, be given to the RISE program at Medfield High School. I've been overwhelmed by their support, kindness and dedication, while my child is going through a difficult time, they were with us every step of the way. We're very lucky to have a program like this in place, thank you for believing, social, emotional wellbeing for students, it means the world to us. So that's one thousand dollars, and the second one also enclosed, if I'm donation, the amount of seventy-five dollars that we'd like to go to the RISE program. So two folks that have asked to be part of their donations, I asked that you accept them, that we would make sure that Dave gets that.
Dave motion to approve?
So moved?
Second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Wonderful, and we are most grateful.
Thank you. The second reading of the, the policies that we did in June, they're all listed there and you had all the first drafts in your, in your packet last time and again this time as well. Again, those were all recommended through Mary with her work with our attorneys, so they're all just bringing those policies up to date with the correct language, that should be there legally. So we had our attorneys go through that and Mary worked real hard on that, so I'd ask that you, you approve those as they were presented.
I motioned to approve, if that's really there, I motioned to approve, and, correct me as I go through this, but. I motioned to approve revisions to the nondiscrimination policy and grievance procedure file ACE. The nondiscrimination on the basis of six, sex, ACA. The bullying retaliation and harassment policy, file number JICFB. Nondiscrimination file AC and sexual harassment policy file ACAB as written, these revisions.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Mary would be happy to hear that tomorrow morning.
I bet she will.
Wonderful, Dale Street project?
So, yeah, that's the item, only item I have under superintendent's report, so last week we had an informational walkthrough with all potential architects for the project. So our OPM, our owner's project manager, Left Field, was there with us and we met with all of the, the potential architects. I gave them the fifty cent tour, practiced my retirement skills of working at Disneyland, going around, giving the tour and showing, showing them everything from classroom space. To the actual boiler room, which has the original boiler.
You didn't show the boiler room, did you?
Well, we went down to the boiler room, they got to see the original one and then that they left there when they put the new one in, because it's too big to take out, so. Went through all of that, went down to the basement, they got a really good sense of what the building might, looks like, because as part of the MSBA process. One of the things they need to look at is, can we take that existing structure and gut it and use that as a school? So that, that was part of that process, there's a timeline now that goes into September that they're gonna put the RFS out for architects. And we're gonna have an architect on board to do some of those schematics, so Left Field has been a great OPM to work with, we, if you remember, last spring, we had several interviews with other OPMs. And they came up on top, excellent to work with and we're real pleased with, with the work they've done so far, so it's moving along. And we're, we're looking at going back to MSBA, Michael, is that October? So we're going back to the board MSBA in October, in which they will hopefully approve the next plan that we need to do. So we're going back to the board MSBA in October, in which they will, um, hopefully approve the next plan that we need to do. And we should be having a, a building committee meeting soon, we haven't had one all summer, so I would assume we'll have one in September.
Alright, great.
So that's been going well.
Super, um, should we do this one here?
Sure, I, I think informational items.
Okay, yes, sorry.
Yeah, so part of the informational items, um, the other part of what I have for you, um, just a few things. One is, I want, just want to put in your, your materials, a letter that I received from Tech, um, thanking, uh, Michael for his work, um, on a subcommittee there. Uh, Michael does a lot of work with collaborative bargaining, excuse me, purchasing, uh, that they do at Tech, and the executive director sent me a letter thanking him for his work. So that was really nice and, and certainly well deserved.
Thank you, Michael. You're saving us and a whole bunch of other schools.
It's exactly what you said.
So you're spreading the wealth, thank you.
Um, also, I put in the materials, uh, a, a letter that went to, uh, Anne Mae and me, um, from the, the Norfolk County Sheriff. Uh, he is developing a task force, uh, for juvenile substance abuse and mental health, and he was going to ask for an appointee from each school committee in Norfolk County to be a part of that. So I, I put that in materials, thinking that it was something that we could discuss if we wanted to, and if you wanted to appoint someone, it'd be great representation, Left Field, to be on that committee.
Right, um, I would like to appoint Megan Glenn.
And I will accept.
Fabulous, thank you.
Great.
Because I figure Leo's got Dale Street.
Yep.
Jess has town planning, Tim and I have SEL, so we need to spread the love.
No doubt.
Plus, it should be a really interesting.
Oh, for sure.
Really interesting assignment, I, I'd love to be a fly on the wall on that one.
So thank you for accepting that, Megan.
And then the last, uh, information material, just all of the, um, communications that have come in from, uh, the public's record division over the summer. I mean, I think the first one that's in there started on June sixth, um, and you can see there's been many, the June seventeenth, uh, July twenty-ninth, August fifth, uh, August ninth, July first. Another one, August ninth, August fifteenth. So there's been a lot of work that certainly we've been doing this summer, and our attorneys have been doing this summer as well on these issues, so just wanted to make sure that you have that, um, information for you.
Alrighty.
That's all I have about it here.
Thank you. Do you have a motion to adjourn? Oh, wait, before that, um, any updates? Sorry.
Um, I hope everyone had a wonderful summer, excited to get back, excited to send my kids back to you, Jeff.
Should be a common feeling around.
I love that commercial, the Staples commercial, it's classic, when the father's dancing through, right? Uh, no, I hope everyone's had a great summer, we certainly have, um, the kids are excited, obviously there's a little bit of jitters, and then, uh, of course, all the teachers too have their, their jitters, the, the Sunday night drama, it comes back, are they ready for the week?
August is an entire month of Sunday nights.
That's right, it's a hundred percent accurate, um, so, but I hope, I can tell that there's a lot to greet our teachers and our children this year with all the improvements. So I want to thank Michael again and, and the team for all that work, cause it's noticeable, the parking lot we walk is noticeable, believe it or not, that's, those small things make a big difference. And I know that the lighting will make a big difference, actually, with the new lighting, um, I didn't notice the hallway and the colors in the hallway until I walked down to the hallway, so.
Yep, it's true.
So it's true.
It's been damped down.
Yeah, so it really is, I think it's gonna make a big difference that we don't, don't even know, so, one of those unseen things. So thank you for all that work, and, um, yeah, that's all, I'd say we're excited for the year.
Uh, ditto to that, had a great long summer, feel recharged, refreshed, ready to send my kids off. But, yeah, and to drill down at our workshop, set some goals, and have a good year.
Um, I'm looking forward to the kickoff breakfast on Monday with the teachers, I think I'll be able to make it this year, which I'm very excited about. And, uh, just to say that we have been working on the townwide master plan committee throughout the summer, and we are moving forward, but, uh, we've hired a consultant, and we will be doing a lot of outreach to kind of publicize. But I, I continue to say, and I think that we'll need to coordinate, when we are looking for input around Dale Street and around, um, you know, if we're looking again at strategic planning and things like that. It would probably behoove us all to be able to try to coordinate if there's a crossover with the information that we need. Because, uh, my biggest concern is that in a town like this, uh, we get kind of, um, survey exhaustion, and then we stop getting the right kind of data that we need. So if there are places that we can kind of cross our purposes.
When is that committee planning on doing some survey?
Um, I think, and I would, I wish I brought my notes, but I think that we're starting to think about a, kind of a bigger kickoff somewhere around December, November, December.
Okay.
Yeah, so I don't know when the building committee is thinking about that next phase.
Right.
And I, and please let me look at my, um, data, and we have almost a full day, I think you're going on Thursday, next Thursday, we'll be doing literally a two-hour tour of Medfield with the consultants and members of the townwide master planning and department heads, and I'll be on that too. Just going around Medfield and looking at all of the things that make it unique, and also things that are liabilities and things that we need to be concerned with over the next twenty years, so.
That's great. I know that Mary, Mary's gonna be doing focus groups in September at night with parents, um, as she starts working on that part of the strategic plan for.
Okay.
Developing our, our mission and goals for, um, special education, student services.
Great.
So she has, she'll have two separate ones for, um, parents, two separate ones for staff, and then she, I think, I think she has six altogether, so that's gonna work out really well.
If we really think about it, the people who, I mean, this is meant to be a twenty-year plan, so the people whose kids are entering school right now, if they think about themselves in twenty years, they're going to be, you know, like, this plan is going to kind of encapsulate like the chunk of their child-rearing years. And I think it's really important that we make sure that they are brought in despite the noise and the so many things that are happening in their lives. I think it's easy sometimes to get involved as your kids get a little older, but it's really important that we get the input now, too, from the younger grades and from the people who are just moving in. So, that's my blurb on that.
Super.
Oh, I don't want to interrupt. Is it too soon to ask if you've seen a swell of people registering this week?
Good question.
No, it hasn't been, um.
Excellent question.
Cause I saw a couple of moving vans, it was like, ooh.
It hasn't been, I'll, I'll have the final numbers tomorrow, but, um, it hasn't been what, at least what we thought originally, so.
Although I've seen a couple of late, late bloomers on the market coming on. People who wanna.
Yeah, some that are sitting there, there are some that are flying off, so all that place point, you know.
Anything around, so, you know, anything below seven hundred.
Classroom sizes, like last year.
Yeah, same thing, yeah.
Yeah, great.
How about you, Tim?
No, I'd say I'm glad to be back, excited for the new year.
You're not back, Tim.
Not back yet.
You have to catch the ferry, Tim.
Yeah, I didn't do it for the day, no, I'm excited to see everybody on Monday.
Super, thank you very much for chiming in. I'm just grateful to all of the people who work all, work, work, um, much of the summer. I think we forget, we go on vacation and we, and then things come back and you, huh, so the.
It's all ready to go.
I know, exactly.
Magic, poof!
It's ready to go.
So I'm grateful, and to you, Jess, for doing those meetings over the summer, no, so, um, so anyways, um, and I, I know the high school and, um, a lot of folks are gonna miss John Ponciaco. And, um, so, uh, that'll be difficult for some folks.
We've lost some really wonderful people this year.
It's been a very difficult year, I think, you know, we look at John and, and Don and Mike Sullivan, it's just been a really, really tough few months, so, um, fortunately, we were gonna have, um, Jim McCauley from Riverside is gonna work with the staff, all the staff, on, on Monday. So we'll have our, our typical kickoff, but then, you know, Jim will be there for forty-five minutes, talking to all of us about, you know, what we can do in terms of grief and loss, and how we can support each other, support the kids, and so that's good, that, we added that on after John passed away, so. That's something that we wanted to, uh, do, but it just, you know, it's been a, a tough few months, you know, really tough. But I think it's a wonderful community, and people really support each other, and I think that's what'll happen again as, as we enter the school year. I wanted to ask if anyone had any reaction of the summer reading, the summer reading book.
Leadership?
Yeah, anyone have any reactions to that? I caught you, I caught you all.
Not yet.
Not yet, because it doesn't come in an audiobook. I had a really long flight, and I'm trying to download it.
Well, I think, you know.
It's a really good sedative.
So I think it's, I think it's one of those books that, um, in, in terms of leadership, and we had a, a good discussion about it at our retreat this week, in terms of leadership, it really, um, talks a lot about how to deal with some of the nonsense that we deal with. You know, and I think you guys are talking about nonsense, I certainly am, and, um, it, it, it gives you a good frame of reference and it, to go back on, and why you do the work you do, and why it's important, and why some people act the way they do. So I think that's a really good, if, if you haven't read the whole thing yet.
Yes.
Um, it's, it's a good thing to.
I'm sorry, my kids and I will be cramming this weekend.
No, during, during the month of September, it would be a good, it would be a good read to, to get through the rest of the year. It puts a good, great perspective on some of the stuff we have to deal with.
And I think, actually, in a couple of the meetings that you and I have had, we've, we've had some conversations about it.
Absolutely talked about it, no doubt.
I do want to get some table shot.
I bought the special cover, so you wouldn't.
Super.
Anyway, but I'm just excited to come back, um, you know, at this point in the year, we're, we're sick of these quiet halls, let's get the kids back in, and let's, let's get going, so.
Super.
Amen.
Indeed, alrighty, so motion to adjourn?
So moved?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, thank you, good night.
We're looking forward to seeing you, Tim.
Yeah, thanks, everyone.
Ciao.
Tim, we'll make sure you get a copy of this.